Council will stand in session and let's go to roll call. And by the way, for the record, I'm Ms. Clerk. For the record, council members Fimbre, Fimbres, Lee, and Ulik will be participating electronically through Microsoft Teams. Council will stand in session. Let's go to roll call.
Ms. Santa Cruz here. Mr. Cunningham.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dahl.
Absent excused.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Fimbres.
Ms. Ulik.
Here.
Mayor Romero. Here. Before we go to item two, the city attorney will go over rules of decorum for mayor and council meetings. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Arizona's open meeting laws provide that members of the public may attend and listen to the proceeding during tonight's public meeting of the mayor and council. Arizona law also allows the mayor and council to enforce rules and procedures for public attendance and observation of the meeting to ensure orderly behavior and to prevent unnecessary interference with the public meeting. So here are the rules that apply. The rules require decorum and orderly conduct by the members of the audience. No person attending the meeting shall engage in conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting, including any statements or conduct that interrupt the persons who might be addressing the mayor and council, or that disrupts the discussions of the mayor and council themselves. The mayor has the authority to ensure compliance with the rules of orderly conduct. If disorderly or disruptive conduct continues after a warning, and this is that first warning, the mayor may direct the removal of persons from the chambers and/or recess the meeting itself. If disruptive behavior makes it necessary to clear the chambers, the persons who disrupted the meeting will not be allowed to return to the chambers for the remainder of tonight's meeting. As a final note, please be aware that interfering with or preventing the lawful public meeting from being carried out in an orderly way not only violates the rules of participation, but also violates Title 13 of the Arizona Revised Statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Item two?
Invocation, Pledge of Allegiance, and Appointments to Boards, Committees, and Commissions.
The invocation will be given by Pastor Philip Cruz, Rincon Mountain Presbyterian Church. And after the invocation, I'd like to ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Cruz.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's pray. Almighty God, Creator and Sustainer of all, we come to you this day to seek your welfare, your blessing, your grace upon this city. We know that you are a God who is compassionate and gracious, slow to anger, and abounding in steadfast love. And on this day, we come to you, O God, with heavy hearts, remembering what took place on this day 23 years ago. The loss of thousands of lives, thousands others thrown into confusion, trauma. We pray for the families of those who are still grieving the loss of their loved ones on that fateful day. We pray, O God, that you would comfort them in their grief, that you would instill in each of us desire to follow your ways and to do that which is peaceful, which leads to peace and to the flourishing of mankind. O God, as we come to you tonight, we thank you for our leaders. We thank you for those that you've placed in positions of authority over us. And we ask, O God, as the mayor and city council conduct their meeting tonight, that they would know your wisdom and your will for how they lead, that they would make good decisions that would lead to the flourishing of this city. God, would you protect them and their families? Thank you for their service, O God. And would you allow them to know peace in their own hearts with you and with others? That they would have peace in their families, bless their marriages, bless their children, Lord, and continue to bless this city? We're thankful for the city of Tucson. You have given us this place and this time for us to serve and to serve each other. So give us hearts that are eager to reach out to others around us, to those that we would say are marginalized, those on the edge of society. Lord, may there be no more of that. May the margins diminish and everyone come together. Lord, we place all this before you in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Item 2C. Presentations. I would like to proclaim September 21st, 2024, to be the University of Arizona Health, Sciences, Wellness, and Wonder Day. And here to receive the proclamation...
So, meeting will be called to order. Council will stand in session and let's go to roll call. And by the way, for the record, I'm sorry, Ms. Clerk. For the record, council members Fimbres, Lee, and Ulik will be participating electronically through Microsoft Teams. Council will stand in session, let's go to roll call.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dahl?
Absent, excused.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Fimbres? Ms. Ulik?
Here.
Mayor Romero?
Here. Before we go to item two, the city attorney will go over rules of decorum for mayor and council meetings. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Arizona's open meeting laws provide that members of the public may attend and listen to the proceeding during tonight's public meeting of the mayor and council. Arizona law also allows the mayor and council to enforce rules and procedures for public attendance and observation of the meeting to ensure orderly behavior and to prevent unnecessary interference with the public meeting. So here are the rules that apply. The rules require decorum and orderly conduct by the members of the audience. No person attending the meeting shall engage in conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting, including any statements or conduct that interrupt the persons who might be addressing the mayor and council, or that disrupts the discussions of the mayor and council themselves. The mayor has the authority to ensure compliance with the rules of orderly conduct. If disorderly or disruptive conduct continues after a warning, and this is that first warning, the mayor may direct the removal of persons from the chambers and/or recess the meeting itself. If disruptive behavior makes it necessary to clear the chambers, the persons who disrupted the meeting will not be allowed to return to the chambers for the remainder of tonight's meeting. As a final note, please be aware that interfering with or preventing the lawful public meeting from being carried out in an orderly way not only violates the rules of participation, but also violates Title 13 of the Arizona Revised Statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Item two?
Invocation, pledge of allegiance, and appointments to boards, committees, and commissions.
The invocation will be given by Pastor Philip Cruz, Rincon Mountain Presbyterian Church. And after the invocation, I'd like to ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Cruz.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's pray. Almighty God, Creator and Sustainer of all, we come to you this day to seek your welfare, your blessing, your grace upon this city. We know that you are a God who is compassionate and gracious, slow to anger, and abounding in steadfast love. And on this day, we come to you, O God, with heavy hearts, remembering what took place on this day 23 years ago. The loss of thousands of lives, thousands others thrown into confusion, trauma. We pray for the families of those who are still grieving the loss of their loved ones on that fateful day. We pray, O God, that you would comfort them in their grief, that you would instill in each of us desire to follow your ways and to do that which is peaceful, which leads to peace and to the flourishing of mankind. O God, as we come to you tonight, we thank you for our leaders, we thank you for those that you've placed in positions of authority over us. And we ask, O God, as the mayor and city council conduct their meeting tonight, that they would know your wisdom and your will for how they lead, that they would make good decisions that would lead to the flourishing of this city. God, would you protect them and their families? Thank you for their service, O God. And would you allow them to know peace in their own hearts with you and with others? That they would have peace in their families, bless their marriages, bless their children, Lord, and continue to bless this city. We're thankful for the city of Tucson. You have given us this place and this time for us to serve and to serve each other. So give us hearts that are eager to reach out to others around us, to those that we would say are marginalized, those on the edge of society. Lord, may there be no more of that. May the margins diminish and everyone come together. Lord, we place all this before you in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Item two C? Presentations. I would like to proclaim September 21st, 2024, to be the University of Arizona Health Sciences Wellness and Wonder Day. And here to receive the proclamation are Dr. Michael Dake of UVA Health Sciences, Rachel Reinhardt, Associate VP for Communications at the University of Arizona Health Sciences, Melissa Colchado, Assistant VP, Strategic Initiatives and Planning, Anne Marie Medina, Director of Corporate and Community Relations, Alex Dubois, Associate Director Engagement and Events, and Chris Hanning, Senior Manager in Multimedia for Journalism, also of the Health Sciences Communication Building. If you can join me at the microphone.
So, on behalf of the city of Tucson and the office of the mayor, I'd like to read a proclamation declaring, what is it, September 21st, 2024, to be University of Arizona Health Sciences Wellness and Wonder Day. Whereas the University of Arizona Health Sciences focus is on improving the health and well-being of all Arizonans and addressing critical global health challenges while delivering the benefits of discovery to the world. And whereas Health Sciences includes campuses in Tucson, Phoenix, and Gilbert, Arizona, is home to the College of Health Sciences, the College of Medicine in Phoenix, the College of Medicine in Tucson, the College of Nursing, and the R. Ken College of Pharmacy, and the Mel and Enid Zuckerman College of Public Health. And whereas, under the leadership of Dr. Michael Dake, Health Sciences is moving forward on multiple fronts to address critical healthcare challenges that are providing us with unprecedented opportunities to excel in education, research, outreach, and care in more and better ways than ever before. And whereas the mission of the Health Sciences is to improve health and human potential by educating the next generation of healthcare professionals, investigating and solving critical healthcare problems, providing compassionate and culturally sensitive care, and building healthier communities for all. And whereas Health Sciences is known for relentless curiosity, interprofessional collaboration, and the intentional inclusion of diverse perspectives and experiences. And whereas Health Sciences values engagement and relationships with the community at large. And whereas Wellness and Wonder Day will provide an opportunity for all members of the community to explore the Health Sciences campus, hear from experts on multiple topics, engage in active learning, and enjoy the many art collections housed in the colleges and centers. Now therefore, I, Regina Romero, Mayor of the City of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September 21st, 2024, as University of Arizona Health Sciences Wellness and Wonder Day. And I encourage all residents of the city of Tucson to attend and enjoy the many activities being offered on the University of Arizona Health Sciences campus in and around 1670 East Dragman Street from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cast the seal of the City of Tucson, Arizona, to be affixed this 11th day of September, 2024. Congratulations. Thank you so much for the services that you provide our city. And I just wonder if you'd all like to include some words?
Well, on behalf of the Health Sciences, our faculty, staff, and students, I would just want to thank the mayor and the council for this proclamation. We're very excited and hope to host as many Tucsonians as possible on the 21st of September. Thank you again.
Item two D? Appointments to Boards, Committees, and Commissions. City Manager's Communication Number 256, dated September 11th, is received into and made part of the record. May I have a motion to approve the appointments in the report, please?
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
Don't move. There's a motion in a couple of seconds. And the motion is to approve the appointment of Chris Squires to the Industrial Development Authority. I would like to thank Chris Squires for your willingness to serve the city of Tucson. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any against? Motion carries. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Hearing none, we move on to item three.
Mayor and council reports summary of current events.
City Manager's Communication Number 253, dated September 11th, is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. These are to be current events of activities within the community, not position statements on policy issues. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? All right, we see someone. We're going to do the virtual ones first and then come to the dais. Councilmember Fimbres.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. September is the suicide prevention month. There are many reasons for anyone who is dealing with depression and thoughts of suicide can tell, call or text the Suicide Prevention Lifeline at 988, or you can call the People Counting Mental Health Crisis Hotline at 520-622-6000. Please remember your matter. Please reach out. Yesterday, my staff and the mayor attended the groundbreaking of Phase One of the I-10 International Project, which is being developed by Lincoln Property Company. Part of this project includes four warehouses and distribution buildings, totaling 476,000 square feet, 214,800 square feet, 327,000 square feet, and 458,908 square feet. And then David from Woldy, Senior Executive Vice President for Lincoln Property Company, for inviting us to the event. And I would thank Mayor Romero for attending the event. Also Barbara Coffey and Mike Chikowski. And my staff, Repita Robles and Mary Garchar were also there. Went to event the members of the community to attend the Health and Research Fair, which will be held Tuesday, September 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Cherry Avenue Center, 508-5085, South Cherry Street. There will be free raffles, giveaways, health checks, including blood pressure and cholesterol checks, educational information, and much more. Over 20-plus agency representatives will be in attendance, as well as more information. Please call 520-791-4497. Additionally, the Quinte Douglas Center will be hosting a health fair in Colley Bank, which will be held on Friday, September 27th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at 1575 East 36th Street. We have screens, vendor booths, Colley Bank, and much more. For more, you can call 791-2507. Want to invite the members of our community to attend a trunk retreat, which will be held on Friday, May 11th, excuse me, October 11th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. The Quinte Douglas Center, this will be a free community event. Ari Santa Rosa with Choa Neighborhood Association will be hosting its fifth annual trunk retreat, be held on October, Saturday, October 19th, from 9:00, 5:30 to 7:30, the same Santa Cruz Church School Field, 2020, South Sixth Avenue. We invite all members of the community to attend this fun event. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for being there yesterday too, and God bless you.
Thank you so much, Richard. Councilmember Ulik or Lee, I don't know if you wanted to include any current events. All righty, then we go on to the dais. Councilmember Cunningham?
I just want to announce that September 19th is our open house at the Ward Two Office, 7820 East Broadway. We've now been there one year. It's been the one-year anniversary since we moved from 7575 East Speedway to the East Side Service Campus at 7820 East Broadway. There's some interesting things coming with some of the other folks that are going to be in that space. It's one of the better advancements in utilization of space that Tucson's enjoyed. So I'm really proud of the move. We've been there a year. I hope people come out. That's September 19th, 5:30 p.m. Also, this weekend, it's actually going to be in Ward One, but it's 7:00 p.m. This Saturday is the Ori Park Takeover. We've got some high flyers coming in from Balla's Life, from Slam Ball, GOI's, who's one of the best online social influencers for street basketballs coming into town. It should be a lot of fun, and I want to thank all the people who are involved.
Councilmember Santa Cruz?
Yeah, good afternoon, buenas tardes. So this Sunday, September 15th, at 7:30 a.m., we're inviting folks to join the Sunnyside Foundation for their Burrito Run and Health and Wellness Fair. It's a family-friendly 5K that takes you along a flat pavement path around Mission Manor Park. We'll also be talking to the public about the improvements coming to Mission Manor Park, as well as the therapeutic pool in the splash pad. After the run, explore various resources and enjoy fun activities. Mission Manor Park is located at 5900 South 12th Avenue. Then on Monday, September 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00, we have our regularly scheduled Ward One Bike Check Event, where we offer free minor bike repairs sponsored by Fuga. You can bring your bike in for a complimentary evaluation and basic repair at the Ward One Office, 940 West Alameda Street. Thursday, September 19th, at 5:00 p.m., the Sunnyside Foundation is having their big Gives Day Black Party at one of our favorite Ward One businesses at American Eco. Their goal is to reach, raise $125,000 to help strengthen families, students, and educators in Tucson's South Side. It'll be an evening of music, performances, and community celebration. American Eco is located at 1439 South Fourth Avenue. And then finally, on Friday, September 20th, at 9:00 a.m., we're celebrating Parking Day at the Mercado, located on Congress and Mercado San Agustin, where 16 parking spots along. The Mercado will be transformed into public parks and social spaces. You can join Ward One and Fuga for unique experience, featuring pieces sponsored by one of our other local businesses, Petroglyphs. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. And I just want to recognize, today we remember along with the families and loved ones of nearly 3,000 people whose lives were lost during the September 11th, 2001 terrorist attack on our country. We will never forget this tragic day, as well as the heroic actions of first responders and individuals across our country who worked in the service of others on that day and the days following that tragic event. Please keep those that are still feeling the effects of this terrorist attack in your prayers and your thoughts as we continue to get stronger and strive to become a much more unified country. September 15th through October 15th, Tussanans and the world will celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. So much of who we are as a region, our arts, our history, our places, our culture, our language, and food have roots in our rich Hispanic heritage. The Mexican-American heritage that we are here in Tucson is pretty beautiful to be able to carry forward and celebrate for generations to come. I hope that everyone has the opportunity to take part in the many celebrations happening in our community. With that, we move to item four.
City Managers Report Summary of Current Events.
City Managers Communication Number 254, dated September 11th, is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Two quick announcements for tonight. One is, I'm very happy to announce the appointment of Tucson native and former PDSD Director Christina Swallow as the new Assistant City Manager. She brings over 30, three decades, not 30 decades, sorry, three decades of experience in engineering and management across various sectors, invaluable expertise and a well-rounded perspective on this position in the city manager's office. She will oversee a variety of key departments that are essential to the growth and development of Tucson, including the Tucson Development Center, Economic Initiatives, Planning and Development Services, our Chief Resilience Officer, Parks and Recreation, Environmental and General Services, and Transportation and Mobility. So thank you for joining the team up here, Christina. And speaking of staffing, I'd like to also announce that we're about to begin the recruitment for a new Community Safety Program Director. This position is part of our reorganization of our work in the areas of community safety and violence intervention. Thanks to the foresight of our mayor and council, we have piloted several community safety initiatives over the last four years, including our Community Safety Health and Wellness Program, our Housing First Program, and Place Network Investigations. These pilot programs have been unqualified successes in improving the lives of people in our community, but there is a lot of work ahead. We will now be consolidating these interconnected programs in the city manager's office and have them led by this new position to assure that the intersectionality is achieved across these programs. Both myself and Assistant City Manager Liz Morales look forward to talking with you, mayor and council, about these and other work as we examine our future funding sources and our approach to these programs in the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Item five?
Liquor License Applications Report from City Manager.
City Manager's Communication Number 265, dated September 11th, is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, please read the liquor license agendas.
Your Honor, on this evening's agenda, we have requests for six new licenses, 15 special events applications, and one agent change acquisition of control. All applications are in compliance with city requirements, so an appropriate motion would be to forward items 5B1 through 6, 5C1 through 15, and 5D1 to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
May I have a motion, please?
Don't move, Your Honor.
Don't move. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any against? Motion carries. Item six?
Call to the audience.
Ms. Clerk, do you have any announcements on item six?
Yes, Your Honor. In addition to what Mr. Rankin spoke about at the beginning of the meeting, speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. As he mentioned, the green light will turn on on the lower dais when you begin speaking. It will turn yellow when you have 30 seconds left of your allotted time. When your three minutes are up, the light will turn red and the timer will begin beeping. Please immediately conclude your remarks at the beep of the timer. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. And before we start, call to the audience, I'd like to invite the people who are here to speak about item 10, the Safe and Vibrant City Initiative, to please join us to stay for the presentation for item 10. I'm going to try and move item 10 to right after the consent agenda so that we don't take too much of your time. So all those that are here to speak about item 10, the Safe and Vibrant City Initiative, please stay with us so that we can do a presentation and you could be part of the discussion there. So with that, I'd like to invite Laura Silva to be our first speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Romero and members of the Tucson City Council. My name is Laura Silva, and I am presenting as myself on behalf of myself. I've been a Tucson resident since 2018, and I live in Ward One. My purpose today is to make an ask with respect to public safety within Tucson city limits on the Chuck Huckleberry Loop. The loop is a very valuable asset for the city and the region, and we value its use for recreation, healthy lifestyles, climate resilience, as well as public safety, removing pedestrians and cyclists from vehicular traffic on the roads. First, this is not a complaint about whether or not there are people present who are unhoused. Rather, there is an unacceptable gap in public safety on the loop. My personal experience includes being stalked by a bicyclist while jogging, a near miss from being hit head-on by a sedan on the path, which I and a witness simultaneously being hit head-on by a sedan on the path, which I and a witness simultaneously reported to TPD in 2023, a near crash when one of the people seated on the path under the Grant Road Bridge stuck his legs out right in front of my bicycle, and this past Friday, I escaped from a motorcyclist driving on the Loop who saw me pull out my camera, stopped in front of me, threatened me about taking a photo, and then pulled ahead to a curve in the path behind bushes. I sprinted off the path. I reported the motorcyclist incident to TPD. I have not received a call back from TPD for either of my calls, and this is just my experience. From others in the community, I have heard cynicism, apathy, and the assumption of a premise that the Loop, at least in Tucson city limits, is a lawless expanse. Madam Mayor and members of the city council, do you accept this premise? I understand the harsh reality of the lack of resources. While we welcome a couple of security hires with NARCAN, we need officers of the law. And I believe that winning is a choice and we can choose to win. So my ask is very specific. Number one, the city and TPD publicly affirm that the Loop within Tucson city limits is no less important than any other part of the city. And two, TPD sets transparent metrics for public safety on the Loop, reports against these metrics, and receives community input with respect to the metrics and the outcomes. Rather than ignoring the problem, answering provides the opportunity to form a basis for the need for additional resources. And if TPD hasn't run the plate on the motorcyclists yet, why not? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Silva. Victoria Devasto.
Putting sharp rocks under overpasses to prevent people from resting in the shade is cruel. Installing hostile architecture is cruel. ramping up police presence instead of real social services in hotspot areas is cruel. I'm not against the tax increase. We need to actually, we need to keep actual helpful programs running. We need the tax increase. I am against misrepresenting a large group of your constituents to throw $6 million into new shiny police vehicles. And Councilmember Cunningham, you've stated you believe the current plan for the sales tax will tackle the fentanyl crisis head-on. You want more police. In reality, more arrests and more police means this harmful cycle repeats. Jail, homelessness, jail, et cetera. If you want to tackle the fentanyl crisis, look to harm reduction, education, and actual public safety. Put Sharps deposit boxes in your parks. Fund detox and recovery programs over new police vehicles. You're slowly making it illegal to be homeless in a hostile climate. The housing market is sky-high. Rental prices have increased at an alarming rate and you're punishing people who can't afford it anymore. Where in the city of Tucson can someone go to get shade and water for free legally? Cooling centers are running full. Parks offer shade, but you kick them out. I couldn't get a feeding permit at Santa Rita Park if I wanted to, but we still go. I will continue to go there and offer support because the need is dire. Underpasses and washes are restricted to those unhoused. Where do they go? When the city stops seeing homeless people as a public nuisance, that will be something to celebrate. Until then, please converse with us, work with us, please listen to us, as we are fighting to keep the voices of your most vulnerable population heard. And Councilmember Finbres, we need leaders who can show up for their community and not just virtually. Thank you.
Enrique Olivas Pelayo.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Enrique Olivas Pelayo. I am here representing myself and as well as Just Communities Arizona, the nonprofit that I work for. It's been my privilege as a community organizer to work alongside members of the Community Safety, Health, and Wellness Team in parts of our city that are severely under-resourced and are known as spots that need to be addressed for the crises that they're facing, which is fentanyl drug overdoses as well as hyperpolicing. And so I want to applaud the proposal for its significant investments in housing, workforce development, community-based violence reduction, and infrastructure improvements, in particular, the sustainability of the city's Community Safety, Health, and Wellness Department. However, I do want to respectfully request that mayor and council relocate some of the investment in the planned $80 million budget because of the alarming discrepancies that I have noticed between the actual feedback that the city has received and the budget allotments proposed. In a memo to Anna Rosenberg dated May 7, 2024, there were ranked priorities of the respondents to a citywide survey. The top priorities for Tucsonans overall were an increase in city infrastructure, expanding affordable housing, and investing in more efforts to decrease poverty. Investments in more first responders ranked sixth. Question number three specifically asked about priorities for community safety initiatives. The number one priority for Tucsonans was to expand mental health services, yet there is no funding whatsoever laid out in this ballot initiative to address this priority. Increasing staffing for TPD ranked number four in this category and specifically referred to professional staffing, investigators, and analysts, not street patrol or sworn officers. In contrast, the overwhelming majority of the budget items in the current proposed spending plan are on policing. 5.6 million for sworn officers, 2.6 million for expansion, 1.7 million for TPD apparatus, 6 million for patrol vehicles. In total, 19.6 million. It's unclear why these additional police expenditures are necessary, especially in light of the fact that they were not the highest priority items requested by Tucson Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Lee Urias.
Hello, my name is Lee Urias and I'm here to speak on the same subject. I was reading through the proposed Safe and Vibrant City Plan, and I found it very misleading, similar to like what other people have said so far. I, I read a lot in this plan about how proven tactics are housing first, harm reduction, and I know that what a lot of people are requesting is infrastructure and mental health services. And yet, in the plan, what I saw instead is the majority of this tax will go to enhanced emergency first responders at 22% and capital investment for first responders at 30%, where everything else is below 20% of the budget. In reading more about what is specifically being asked for with this budget, it's new, a new, a new surveillance technology for police in the form of aircraft, more vehicles for police, and better equipment for SWAT teams. I don't see how that is keeping any of us safer, and I don't see that reflected in what people have asked for at all. It seems like the calls to the public and calls for our comments are just being twisted to say that we want more safety and more police when that's a clear manipulation of what we are actually saying, which is that we want less. It's very clear when words are put together just by the amount of people saying them, and it's put out there that police is one of the biggest, most mentioned things in the call to the public. And yet, what people are actually asking for when they're using the word police is to defund and use less of our budget on that. So I feel as a resident of Tucson, unheard and manipulated by this, and I know that a lot of other people do too. If this is something that we're going to be voting on, I think that it really needs to be reworked to actually reflect what people want, or else what people want is being used to just give more money to the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Zish. I think Zish, I am completely tearing this name apart. I'm sorry.
No one's ever said it right before. Hi, I'm Lee Zishi. I currently live in Ward Six and I will be moving to Ward One later this month. I'm a member and organizer with the Tucson Democratic Socialists of America. I'm here just to speak on behalf of myself tonight, but I do mention Tucson DSA because we have been canvassing since of October of last year, talking to people about replacing TEP with a publicly-owned utility. We also had a town hall in April at the Global Justice Center and a community discussion just two weeks ago at Splinter Collective about the climate crisis and affordability crisis. So we have literally had hundreds and hundreds of conversations with Tucson community members about how this city is becoming too expensive for working-class people. People are struggling, struggling to pay TEP bills, struggling to pay rent and for groceries and gas. People are drowning no matter how hard they work. Raising sale taxes will only make this crisis worse and hurt the community-owned businesses that depend on people to spend money. We know that wealth inequality in this country is growing, and forcing working-class people to pay more for the issues created by capitalism is unjust and cruel. And it's even more concerning that such a huge portion of the proposed sales tax would go to the Tucson Police Department and on surveillance technologies. Spending millions there may benefit the prison and military-industrial complexes, but will do nothing to make our city safer or more resilient. We cannot criminalize poverty. We need to expand housing programs and hire more social workers. We need more overdose prevention measures and outreach and resources to our unhoused neighbors when temperatures become unsurvivable. We need more utility assistance. I cannot tell you how many people I've talked to who can't afford their utility bills. There are so many resources that can make our city safer and more affordable. Cops aren't one of them. As a community organizer, I know how hard it is to get people to participate in local government. It's not that people don't care. People are busy and tired and just trying to survive. And unfortunately, some of those people think that you don't care and that their voices don't matter. So I ask you to please listen to the hundreds of residents who took the time to fill out the survey. It takes a lot to get people to do that. It also takes a lot to get people to email you all. So please listen to all the people that have emailed you who are asking you to fund critical resources, and please find ways to fund those critical resources that do not come at the expense of working-class Tucsonans. Thank you so much. I really appreciate you listening today.
Thank you. Marlee Webster. Marlee Webster.
My name is Marlee Mae Webster. I'm speaking for myself as well. So I am here to talk to you all tonight in a similar vein to the other things that have been going on so far. I want to talk about the sales tax. So I do not wholly disagree with the idea of raising a sales tax, but I do think that in a lot of cases, it's going to disproportionately affect people who are already struggling. So if there's any other way to raise funds, I think that looking into those options would be ideal, because obviously, there are a lot of people out here struggling right now. I mean, you can walk around anywhere in town and see it. You don't even need to come at this from a humanitarian perspective necessarily. We all probably don't want to see nearly as many people just on the sidewalks out there all the time. Whatever reason you're coming at this from, increasing police budgeting is not necessarily going to do anything. Most of the time, it's just dumping resources into like an endless pit, because arresting people to move them around, to arrest them again, to let them out, to move them around, they're not going anywhere. They're not going anywhere different. Arresting them isn't helping. So I hope that if we do raise a sales tax, that we will put these money towards things like increasing the living wage, more affordable housing, libraries, parks, things that we can all use, things that will actually address some of the root causes, things that will actually make things better, not just, you know, obviously, if you give more resources to the police, they will use them because this problem that they're trying to solve is not going away, and so the numbers will come back and it'll be like, oh, well, they used every drop that we gave them, because it's not solving anything. So we got to put it into things that are actually going to solve the real problems. Otherwise, we're just going to get caught in this endless cycle. That's about all I got.
Thank you, Marlee. Aliena.
My name is Alina Nezlik. I'm representing myself and I am a born and raised Tucsonan, and I would like to come with you with some ideas to tackle some of our community's biggest problems, because what we need in our communities are common sense, community-focused solutions that utilize resources that we already have. What we don't need is more police, as you've heard from everybody here tonight. So I really hope that you listen with an open mind to the possibilities and the fact that you have the power to enact things that will enact change. Something that I think none of us have focused on tonight is the fact that, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, there are 19,528 vacant buildings in Tucson right now. And that's just Tucson. That doesn't count, include Pima County. What I think we should be doing is we should be investing money into turning unused office buildings that have kitchenettes, complete with dishwashers, microwaves, fridges, and several floors of bathrooms and showers into emergency homeless shelters. We should be converting unused apartment buildings into homeless shelters. Just on a rudimentary Google, I could find four different office buildings that had kitchenettes and complete living amenities for people to live in. These would not be ideal conditions, but they could be spaces that could house large amounts of people in a way to get them off the streets so they're in a more safe and stable condition. Every time I have brought up this idea to people, they tell me that it's not possible because of zoning laws and red tape. You, you are the red tape. You are the people responsible for those zoning laws, and you are the people responsible to listening to your communities, hearing what they want, and finding solutions. So I don't understand why it is my job as somebody who works 40 hours a week to find those solutions for you, when it is your job that we pay you for to come at these problems with solutions that are focused on what we want. We, with our taxes, pay your salary. The police do not pay your salary, yet based on what you want to spend your budgeting on, it feels like they do. I would like you to think about, if we want to talk about raising taxes, I would like you to think about instituting a vacancy tax. If you can't bring yourselves to think about housing our unhoused populations in office buildings, then at the very least, consider a vacancy tax. Don't raise the taxes on the people who can't afford to pay their expenses. Raise the taxes on the people who can afford to have vacant buildings not making them any money for years at a time. I personally used to work in an office building that's been closed for two years now without anything going on in that building. Why are we committing so much space, 19,000-plus spaces, to just sitting on the sidewalks? I was reading articles that Tucson City doesn't like those buildings because they cause problems, so why not invest in at least making them invest in our communities? Doing so would cause them to lower their rent and increase the Tucson City funding. I want you to think about the fact that you are the red tape and you are the people that have the power to change zoning laws so our spaces can actually benefit our communities. Thank you.
That's going to be a hard act to follow. Thank you, mayor and council, for hearing me. I saw you, Mayor Regina Romero, at the Community Land Trust Symposium, and I was very happy to see you there and hear your words. At the symposium, you mentioned that it is very important that our representatives listen to their constituents, and I was so happy to hear you say that. And I just want to bring to the table again that this public comment period is a great opportunity to listen to your constituents, because we would like our values to be represented by our government. Sunshine laws that enacted the legal requirement for public comment, like the ones that we're having here, started as a response because people didn't feel like their governments were representing them legitimately. And so, in that spirit, I hope you do listen to the people who are speaking here tonight, because it lends actual legitimacy to I want to echo what some of my other peers have said here tonight, in that we need to find solutions that are proven effective for the community issues we're seeing, and that those should come from the public discussion already had, the public comment already made, and the community engagement done about the sales tax, which did prioritize mental health and other infrastructure, and did not prioritize funding for policing, which has been proven less effective than other means. And so with that, thank you for listening. I hope you do take the public comment seriously. Have a good day.
Thank you. Bert Royce. Robert Royce.
Hello. I'm Robert Royce. A year ago, I stood here and asked the voters, my supporters, to vote for your pay raise, which they did. I'm pretty sure I swung at least 1,000 votes, which allowed your pay raise to pass by a razor-thin margin. And you're all thanking, you're thanking the voters for your pay raise by not coming to work, which is not right. We don't need a new sales tax, which will drive commerce out of our city. What we do need is my countywide sales tax plan, which I've presented here five times. The mayor has seen it five times. The manager never has. He has no idea. My plan calls for a countywide sales tax, elimination of our charter-enabled sales tax in the city, with the funds from the unincorporated areas going directly to the county, with three-quarters of the new revenue being devoted to lowering our property taxes. And yes, we do have, that's my plan, which needs legislative enablement. We do have a shortage of funding for our police department, but this is not the way to fix it. We don't need an RTA. We need my county sales tax proposal, which contains one full penny to replace the RTA tax and the city's transportation tax. With the balance, the unincorporated areas will go directly to Pima County to fund Pima County roads, so they don't have to tax us as hard on our houses. This system is not working. Some of the poorest people in the county are paying for our city services with a sales tax, and then they're being asked to pay for county services with, which mostly they don't use, with a property tax. At our houses, we're being overtaxed in the city to fund the county sheriff's department, which we don't use. So this system is bad. We need to move to a countywide sales tax, which requires legislative enablement. I mean, if Arkansas can have a countywide sales tax plan, which supplies the unincorporated revenue to the counties, then we could do it here in Tucson, Arizona. I will be asking everyone to vote against the sales tax next year, and I'm expecting the voters are going to vote down the RTA at the next RTA election. And the only way out of this situation is my countywide sales tax, which will be the first order of business for our new Jefferson part. Thank you.
All righty. J.P. Salvatierra.
Madam Mayor and Councilman, my name is Jonathan Salvatierra. I'm not a retained speaker, and I'm native Tucsonan. Just in the last few days, Vice Mayor Dahl sent a request to the Director of ADEQ asking them to sponsor a question-and-answer period to the public, as well as a comment period separately. And the response that he got said it was inconvenient. The scheduling was inconvenient. But here we have Patagonia and Corona de Tucson getting this full treatment as a minor, minor portion of 1.5 million people that live in the greater Tucson area that are being denied this same knowledge. What Corona de Tucson, Patagonia have to look forward is a mining activity that has a magnitude that will devastate their community and ours. Archaic mining laws were never intended to support the thousand-fold of toxic tailings, sulfuric acid products for sale, and Arizona's final prior approval of housing subdivisions with assured 100-year potable groundwater ignored. This is not the Peruvian Atacama Desert with no inhabitants. We have a conglomerate of cities and towns encompassing Solerita, Tucson, Pima County, Vail, Patagonia, and Morana, among others, that sustain residents of, as the Davis-Monthan Air Force Base, University of Arizona, Kitt Peak Observatory, that all currently benefit from the Santa Rita Mountains' unique geologic strata to hold and purify our groundwater. Southwest and northeast prevailing storms through Sierra Vista area and Nogales from the south have been documented, tornadic events through the National Weather Service verification of increasing climate change weather patterns that are blatantly absent from ADEQ's conceptually flawed modeling. Copper World is a four-profit foreign entity. It can literally walk away from future pollution, health, and medical liability by federal registered decree, gifting their operations to yet another foreign entity like Four Corners' Peabody Coal did. Our Sky Island Migration Corridor-
J.P., you need to come to a conclusion, please.
Is important to us. I am asking, Madam Mayor, that you personally request in more of a vehement response that we need to be represented under this new change. They're requesting-
Come to a conclusion, J.P., please.
This city will be nothing like Phoenix, but their ozone levels, the alerts, the PM-2, the PM-10-
Thank you, J.P. Thank you. Your time is-
Will be drastically more-
We have more speakers, please. Thank you. Your point. You have made your point, J.P. Thank you. Ashley, I can't read the last name. Go, Gomez? I'm sorry.
I'm a lefty. Forgive me.
Can you put the microphone a little bit closer, and just tell us your name for the record?
My name is Ashley Gomez. I have been a citizen in Pima County for the majority of my life, and as well, living in Tucson for the majority. I'm speaking in regard to the Safe and Vibrant City Plan ballot measure of the sales tax hike to fund public safety and affordable housing. I think that when they asked people, it was, they took the opportunity, instead of listening to what people wanted and our highest priorities in regards to this, instead of providing, sorry, instead of providing much-needed affordable housing and safe injection sites and other things that prevent crimes and the need for police intervention, it has just been used as another Trojan horse for more funding for police. And I don't have anything against fire, but people didn't ask for that. This was not what it was intended to do, and I don't think that was the spirit in which it was presented to people. And I think that that does not instill trust in our system. And I think that Arizona is not doing enough, hasn't been doing enough, to help with our housing crisis. And I think that with this measure, which I'm not necessarily against, but I am against providing the majority, 65%, that is not going directly towards these programs for mental health and addiction, which can be prevented with actual housing. And I think that that also puts a lot of pressure and a lot more undue work on police as well, which I'm sure they don't want to do. They don't want to see the same people over and over again. I don't think that's good for anybody. I don't like seeing it. I don't think we like seeing people on the underpass, and I especially don't like seeing jagged rocks being put there, which also just seems very violent to do to fellow citizens. They are our fellow citizens. These are neighbors that have been kicked out of their homes because of the spiral, the upward spiral of housing costs. So I think we need to address that with this tax. I'd be happy to pay that tax if it went directly towards more affordable housing and fixing this problem. I think that if we want to fund, make those funding, we need to have a different measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Minutes is over, but we just have two additional speakers, so I'm going to extend it, if that's okay, so we can make sure that these two speakers have time. Abigail Splitsesser? Splitsesser? And then just please speak your name into the record.
Yes. My name is Abigail Bojana Splitsesser. I am a Ward Five resident. And I just want to start by saying that the irony is not lost on me, that this meeting today started with a prayer for peace, while many of us are here to speak against the funding that's going towards the police department and emergency services. Peace does not equate to funding the police department. Peace comes from a safe home. It comes from a full belly. It comes from being able to listen to the laughter of your children, who are unburdened by the stress of poverty. Peace does not come from mass displacement of people with nowhere else to go and the criminalization of those who are trying to help them. Not only are the police actively harming our most vulnerable neighbors with things like encampment sweeps, but I have seen with my own eyes on countless occasions, police cop cars drive right past individuals slumped over at the bus stop, sleeping on the sidewalk, suffering out in 110-degree heat, driving past without a second look, a second thought. And a lot of these people have no access to water. Again, just police driving by while these people are actively suffering right in front of them. There's nothing about that that's keeping us safe. So considering the budget of the proposed tax, it is a blatant disregard to the clear priorities of your constituents, who, when surveyed, prioritized housing and social services. Not only that, but pouring the funding into the services as indicated and outlined for the budget proposal, it goes against mountains of data and research that show that stable housing and access to necessities greatly decreases the need for emergency services. So with guaranteed housing and support, victims can leave their abusers. That's less DV calls. I see all the time horrible stories about domestic violence calls, okay? A lot of times, you can't leave. Why? Because there's nowhere to go. Heat-related deaths and injuries will plummet with guaranteed housing and services, and those struggling with addiction and mental health issues can escape the environment that's exacerbating their conditions. The only logical reason to pour money into the police department is to control and restrict. So I'd like to know, do you want constituents and neighbors who are vulnerable, controlled, and restricted, or do you want constituents and neighbors who are actually safe, healthy, and thriving? Thank you.
Martinez. Javier Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Javier Martinez. I'm a resident of Ward Six, and I'm here also on behalf of a community group called Anti-Liberation Mutual Aid. We formed during the late part of the summer, this past summer, as a response to the high need for care and support for our houseless neighbors in the area. And recently, we continue to see a trend of police cops patrolling the area, nesting in the parking lot behind the park, all the while, we're distributing what we can and And what I and the rest of the group don't see at that park, at the Anti-Neighborhood Park, are caseworkers, social workers, outreach workers, alternative response groups tending to the dire needs of our unhoused folks. And it's got us both very disappointed and distrustful of the city in the recent decisions that went into this budget plan for the Safe and Vibrant proposal. And before I go further into this opposition against this plan, I do want to make it clear that, one, community members and myself understand what these line items entail, despite the limited public meetings since January that could accommodate for many of your constituencies, including a public hearing on this for today. We understand the potential of what some of these initiatives, including the CBVI funding, could mean for diverting this program from TPD. We are also aware of the work in how initiatives and programs obtain funding from other sources, too. That's not lost on us. What we pick issue with is how small and how limited the potentiality for housing and services are in this budget plan. It does not reflect what the community continues to beg and demand for. For example, $750,000 for community safety, health, and wellness, or $2.5 million for housing first is not a fair trade-off for $6 million for TPD vehicles in a year. If there are attempts in overdose prevention sites, alternative response teams, or even public restrooms, none of this is ever being discussed publicly, advocated for, and for that, we believe the attempt in moving forward with putting this on the ballot will be deemed dead on arrival come March 2025. You've been receiving mass emails, even if some of your staff view your community members as lazy for not having the time or capacity to speak out against this. But rest assured, like I said, we will make sure that this ballot measure will be a no-vote. That's all. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. We're going to move to Item 10 first, because I think it's important that, just as we listen to you, you all should give us an opportunity and listen to the plan. So I'm going to call Item 10, Madam Clerk.
Item 10 is elections. Calling a special election on March 11, 2025 for a proposed amendment to the Tucson Charter to establish a transaction privilege tax to fund community investments and approving the ballot language.
City Manager's Communication, number 264, dated September 11, is received and made part of the record. I just wanted to start before the presentation, because I know the city manager has a presentation. I want to explain to the community more about what the city manager, the city council, and I are presenting to Tucsonans in this Quality of Life Initiative. This mayor and council, and our entire city staff, is charged with delivering services to Tucsonans to build safe, vibrant, and equitable city that we all love. In June, my colleagues on the council and I adopted a $2.3 billion budget for the year ahead. We made strategic investments in affordable housing and shelter, public safety, climate resilience, road improvements, community safety, health, and wellness, and so much more. At the same time, we are making these important investments, declining state shared revenue-
Item 10 is elections, calling a special election on March 11th, 2025 for a proposed amendment to the Tucson Charter to establish a transaction privilege tax to fund community investments and approving the ballot language.
City Manager's Communication Number 264, dated September 11th, is received into and made part of the record. I just wanted to start before the presentation, because I know the city manager has a presentation. I want to explain to the community more about what the city manager, the city council, and I are presenting to Tucsonans in this Quality of Life Initiative. This mayor and council and our entire city staff is charged with delivering services to Tucsonans to build safe, vibrant, and equitable city that we all love. In June, my colleagues on the council and I adopted a $2.3 billion budget for the year ahead. We made strategic investments in affordable housing and shelter, public safety, climate resilience, road improvements, community safety, health, and wellness, and so much more. At the same time, we are making these important investments. Declining state shared revenues that are the result of the DUCI-era flat tax are threatening our ability to sustain or expand these investments now and into the future. Together with Pima County, city staff, and community partners, we created the Prosperity Initiative. As a matter of fact, Councilmember Santa Cruz led in creating that initiative. Both Pima County and the City of Tucson Mayor and Council approved and passed the Prosperity Initiative, which is a clear plan to disrupt cycles of poverty, building generational wealth, and interrupting violence. We have heard the voices of Tucsonans loud and clear. We absolutely hear you. And we've been hearing you over the past several years about the desire to have clean, safe, healthy, equitable, compassionate community that cares for all of our residents, especially the most vulnerable amongst us. We've heard those voices through the Move Tucson Plan, through the Plan Tucson Engagement, through the Housing Affordability Strategy for Tucson and that engagement, through the Tucson Resilient Together Planning, service of all sorts, not just the budget surveys, and during the 2023 election, which through knocking on more than 30,000 doors, making thousands of phone calls during my campaign, dozens of town halls and public events, we have heard from voters, all voters, not just those in front of us. The Quality of Life Initiative that we have before us today is a comprehensive, balanced approach to putting the right work in the right hands, providing the necessary resources to keep Tucson moving forward. This plan is comprehensive and reflective of the lessons we have learned over the past years. We have programs, solutions, and possibilities that have never happened before in the City of Tucson. This mayor and council created the Housing First Program. We never had Housing First Program before. This is an evidence-based program. This mayor and council created the Community Safety, Health, and Wellness Program. This mayor and council created the 311 Program. This mayor and council created strategies and plans that are working for Tucson: housing affordability, climate action and implementation. This mayor and council approved bringing housing navigators and community care coordinators and community service officers and our chief equity officer, our chief resiliency officer, and professional staff investigators. All of those positions never existed before in the history of the City of Tucson. These are real, evidence-based solutions that will continue to make a difference in the lives of Tucsonans every single day. I am proud of the work we have done as a city through our propositions. We've passed Proposition 409 and 101. And we've passed Proposition 407 and 411. 407 is for parks and connectivity. 411 is for our residential roads and safety for our pedestrians and bicyclists. We have a proven track record to voters. We've intentionally put together these initiatives based on the feedback that voters, Tucsonans, have given us. We have been very intentional of what we put in front of voters. It's based on what you have been asking us for. Right now, this particular Quality of Life Initiative is what we need. We have created programs that we have seen real results, but it is not the complete picture. It is a puzzle that we're weaving together to make sure that we are putting each and every piece of the puzzle in front of you. What you should understand is that housing investment in this particular initiative is not the complete picture. We are investing millions and millions of dollars from federal funds, from state funds, that is creating much more affordable housing. We are dedicating pieces of property that we own as a city to create affordability in our community. More than 600 units of affordable housing are planned to be built in the city. And by the way, the City of Tucson should not be the sole government responsible to deal with unsheltered homelessness. We need our partners in Pima County to invest as well. We need our partners in the State of Arizona to invest as well. We need our partners in the federal government to invest as well. We cannot, as a city, solve societal issues alone. And so this initiative is not the cure-all. It is a continuation of investing into a holistic and comprehensive approach to community safety, quality of life, and a safe and vibrant city. So this is not the end. It's just a part of the puzzle that we're creating to make sure that we're continuing to provide all of the programs that we recently created. The State of Arizona and the state legislature are taking away from local governments like Tucson instead of giving us more money. In the next few years, we are going to see a reduction of $400 million removed from the budgets of the City of Tucson because of the DUCI-era flat tax. We need to invest in ourselves. And this particular plan is based on what you're asking us for. It is not just what you've said today. It is so much more comprehensive. So, Mr. Manager, I know you have a presentation. I'd like for you to do your presentation and then allow my colleagues on the council to ask any questions if there are any.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor. And we'll start our presentation here. Many of you heard my presentation at the 27th meeting, so I'm just gonna give some introductory remarks. And I'm gonna turn it over to Liz Morales, who will take you through some of the additional material we brought to tonight. Just to refresh you on the timeline, today, it is on the agenda for the mayor and council to call the special election. That would be informed by the community feedback received since the August 27th study session. And there are additional materials coming soon that will be helping to maybe address some of the concerns expressed, but also to further explain how the holistic approach So coming up to mayor and council, if they decide to proceed tonight, there will be a truth in taxation document that lays out the commitments to the community of how the tax dollars would be used to make that covenant with the community, and a detailed implementation plan, which we'll touch on a little bit tonight. And of course, there will be a Citizen Oversight Commission that helps guide the program over the 10-year period. Based on, you know, the presentation for before, it still remains my recommendation that we defy the $80 million assumed annual budget. We know it will fluctuate with actual tax proceeds, as indicated in my previous presentation. That is a holistic approach. It does include investment in a number of different areas, and those areas don't stand on their own. They're not silos. And our work is to make sure they're intersectional, integrated, and they work together. So you can't take any of the pieces of the pie out and have the pie stay together. That did translate into, when we put it into ballot language, the perception that there's a public safety, 65.75%, and housing shelter and other community investments of 34.25%. Some of the public safety includes operations like the 311. None of the community safety works without the 311 operation. So while it is roughly 2/3 and 1/3, they are interrelated, and they would depend on each other. So since the last meeting, we've had some feedback. And we've had feedback here, we've had feedback in the form of the letters, which I don't think is lazy at all. I think that takes a lot of effort to get, to get folks even to email it on their own, even without changes. That is an effort. But we've had widespread engagement beyond that, including the general understanding that the holistic approach works. And that we, I would agree with, I think it was Abigail who said, increasing in housing stability leads to decreased need for emergency services. I don't think I could agree with you more. What we're putting on the table now is where we are today, and the investments that are needed today to achieve that outcome, coupled with the other investments going on. And I'm gonna give some credit to Councilmember Santa Cruz, who said she wishes it was reversed, you know, 2/3 one way and 1/3 the other. But we can see a vision that in the 10-year period, we could have that outcome. If we do the upfront community investment, the housing investments, while we're taking care of the emergency services needs of today, the emergency services needs of the future would be decreased. So I think we're more in alignment than we might appear. We've had positive responses from the people who do the work, the labor groups and/or the people who actually, when we talk about putting the right work in the right hands, we're talking to those folks who do the work. And there's tremendous support for this proposal as written, including the fact that they need these resources that are not just people in order to do their work effectively. When that police officer drives by a person that is suffering, right now, we don't give them a solution with what to do to help that person. We can do better, absolutely, with what we have today. But when we create a safe sobering site, or we create a justice transition center, we can help break that cycle of arrest and justice, and also have a place that we lack right now. Right now, we don't have any tools in the toolbox. Believe it or not, we've received positive press coverage. That was a little bit of a joke, even though this isn't a joking matter. But there was some pretty good understanding of the holistic approach in some of the recent press coverage. There are certainly concerns from constituents, many of who are not here tonight, about just implementing a new tax is a burden. We get that. There is some calls for redistribution of the general fund. The general fund's tapped out. But generally, the need for increased overall investment, which doesn't just include the taxpayers of Tucson, it includes our partners. And we're gonna talk a little bit about the role of Pima County. And of course, there's been opposition. And I didn't just call it concerns. It is opposition. Until we come to agreement, it's opposition about how the dollars are allocated. And that's fair, and we're hearing you. I do want to pause on mental health and addiction for one moment. One of the reasons, there's infrastructure around that in this proposal, but not necessarily services around that. We have a Pima County Health Department, and we need to rely on them to address the public health crisis of substance use and partner with them on the mental health services. So I agree with you, that is a high priority. I also call upon our partners to meet us where they can to address that. And we'll talk about the opioid settlement dollars a bit, which is a new funding source that we've not had previously, that is going into action in the community, and Liz will touch on that. So do I want people to be safe, healthy, and thriving? Abigail was my favorite tonight. Nothing against the rest of you, but Abigail hit me. Yes. Our vision is a safe, healthy, and thriving Tucsonan for all walks of life. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Liz to explain more.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I, let me make sure. Thank you. No, I'm good. Thank you. So, under the heading of Affordable Housing and Shelter, there are several items proposed that all support or connect individuals to housing, shelter, and supportive services. And what we've heard through our mayor and council and constituents is that we need a little more clarity. And so I'm gonna go through some of those items under our housing investments, which are listed here on the slide. These items are all strategies contained in the Housing Affordability Strategy Plan that was created by feedback from the community and adopted by mayor and council in December 2022. As the former Director of Housing Community Development, I am proud of the work that we have collectively done to clear, to provide a clear plan and strategies to address the housing crisis we are in. Many goals have been accomplished, and we have 1,200 units in the pipeline. It is a good start, but we need significantly more housing among the housing continuum. That is why the Safe and Vibrant City includes housing investments, which will create more housing, improve the quality of existing housing, and create paths to homeownership and providing housing stability to renters. We have many funding sources that we have used to support this work, and the addition of this funding would allow us to get farther and have greater impact. As you know, developing affordable housing is challenging and requires many layers of funding, which still results in gaps just to get housing projects penciled out. The Safe and Vibrant City will provide critical funding to help close the gaps, to make more affordable housing projects possible. The gap financing is one of those lines, which has 2 million a year. And this could bring upwards of 160 additional units and leverage more than 30 million in private investments into housing annually. If you look at it over the 10 years, that would bring 20 million and with significant private investments, which I estimate will exceed 300 million and potentially adding up to 1,600 units. Next item is the Impact Fee Waiver that we have in place, which helps replace and lowers the cost for these affordable housing projects. And we currently have to replace those funds. We can waive it to the developer doing the affordable housing project, but we have to replace it, and it's typically general fund. And so this pool of funding will allow us to provide more waivers and extend that and replace those funds as required. Then I'd like to talk about three categories that all start with the word resiliency. As you know, resilience is the ability to adapt to change positively, recover from difficulties, and persist in facing challenges. When it comes to housing resiliency, challenges like extreme weather, the inability to pay one's rent or mortgage, rising housing prices, or sudden or deferred maintenance needs creating housing instability, investments like home repair program, the rental assistance, eviction prevention, climate adaptation, increases resilience in housing and stability for people. When we talk about down payment assistance, we're all pretty familiar with that. It's become a high commodity as home prices have soared over the last several years. Right now, I checked, I looked and saw that our average home price is in Tucson is 379,000. The Safe and Vibrant City Initiative will expand funding to serve more low-income and first-time homebuyers to make the dream of homeownership possible. And the last item on this list is asset repositioning. Strange term, but it is related to the Approved Housing Financial Stability Plan that was approved by our Board of Commissioners, which is also our mayor and council and one resident. And last week, that was approved. And this Safe and Vibrant City will supplement and support the rehabilitation of single-family homes that will be targeted for affordable homeownership. As an example, we have a single-family home that we want to move out of our federal housing program into affordable homeownership. It's likely more than 30 years old and requires extensive work and renovation, AC, plumbing, electrical, new appliances, new flooring. And our goal with this funding would be to renovate the home, find a low-income, first-time homebuyer to get into a home that's updated and ready for occupancy. And this will result in stabilizing a family who otherwise could not qualify and afford a home. And more importantly, it disrupts poverty. I hope you can see this slide, but this, the city has significantly increased funding, and the mayor spoke to this over the last five years. If, most of this funding is ongoing annually. There's just about a 26 and a half million that is one-time funds. But all of this funding includes acquiring properties for shelter, obtaining significant grants from the feds, state partners for development of affordable housing, supporting our nonprofit community providers, our Housing First Program, who provides shelter, wraparound services, and outreach to our unsheltered. All these sources of funds add up to 141 million. And the large blue bubble has all the list of those things that are specific to housing and shelter. And it would add 10 million annually and 100 million over 10 years, which would bring that total to 151 million on an annual basis. These elements have been carefully designed to supplement and scale up the evidence- to supplement and scale up the evidence-based strategies that we have in place in the Housing Affordability Strategy Plan. It has, we know it has transformative impact for housing and ending the unsheltered experience for our Tucson residents. Let me highlight one of those bubbles as well. I mentioned the acquisition money. It was $24,600,000 since 2020. And we've used that to acquire properties and have added over 100 beds of low-barrier, non-congregate shelter. In 2023, more than 450 individuals utilize these shelters. And since 2020, we have housed over 800 unsheltered persons into permanent housing. And so again, we have more work to do. But that work just since 2020 is significant. An important connection I would like to demonstrate is that this funding aligns with the Prosperity Initiative. The mayor mentioned it, and it was, as she mentioned, led by Councilmember Lane Santa Cruz and Mayor O'Meara, and adopted by mayor and council in January of this year. The Prosperity Initiative is a robust set of 13 policies in the areas of housing, health, education, transportation, workforce development, job quality, small business, financial capability, neighborhood reinvestment, and digital connectivity. The policies were developed from a set of evidence-based policy options that reduce generational poverty and improve individual and community wealth. I want to highlight some of the items under Safe and Vibrant City that were born out of this groundwork of the Prosperity Initiative. The housing investments, for example, will increase housing supply and affordability, improve quality of life and opportunity, and improve housing stability. The community capital investments in the plan are also evidence-based strategies and programs, like the workforce development programs that improve job quality for workers, targeting funding for youth workforce, which connects youth to job training and career paths that result in the prevention of youth involvement in crime. And last, Safe and Vibrant City will invest so that families have access to quality early childhood education that has proven outcomes for children and their futures. High-quality early childhood education is one of the best indicators of future success. In fact, third-grade reading scores can predict the number of prison beds when those children reach 18 years old. So this funding will ensure we continue to disrupt the cycle of poverty and school-to-prison pipeline, investing money now to avoid paying the criminal justice system later. As the city manager discussed, our connection, collaboration, partnership with Pima County, I think it's important to talk about the work that they are doing. In 2022, Pima County, along with partner jurisdictions, including the city of Tucson, began receiving funding as a result of a legal settlement with pharmaceutical companies and distributors to mitigate harms from opioid use. The funding is expected to be $100 million over the next 18 years. In May 2024, mayor and council approved to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Pima County Health Department, who's leading the Joint Cross Jurisdictional Fentanyl Opioid Coordinating Committee, which is now called Substance Misuse Advisory Committee. It includes five to six members, two of which are city representatives appointed by the city manager. They held their first meeting on July 31 of this year with attendees from the city of Tucson, the city of Marana, the city of South Tucson, and Pima County. And they are meeting regularly to use data-driven information and strategies to ensure that the funding addresses the epidemic that we are experiencing. The Pima County Health Department is the most appropriate agency to lead this effort, which the city is highly involved in at the table. The Safe and Vibrant City Initiative will support in many other ways these efforts to combat this crisis. Another element of the Safe and Vibrant City is funding to improve the transit user experience. We have heard from our Tucson residents on what they are experiencing as they utilize our transit system. That is why this element will incorporate funding to improve safety and security for users, to make our bus stops more shaded and user-friendly with signs to include Braille, large-print, wayfinding, and audible information. We also know that transit riders would like to have Wi-Fi so they can utilize their commute time to do either homework or catch up on reading. The city just received an award this year, not too long ago, from the Federal Transit Authority that will provide more than $10 million to transform 80 bus shelters for extreme heat mitigation. And this funding will bring an additional $20 million from Safe and Vibrant City to complete potentially 100 to 150 additional bus shelters. This before-and-after picture demonstrates the many elements that will bring added value to the transit rider experience. In 2020, the mayor created the Community Safety Pilot Program. This evolved into our community safety, health, and wellness with the mandate to identify evidence-based interventions to improve the way we deliver safety to our community. One of those efforts was to transform 911, putting the right work in the right hands. It was determined that only 25% of 911 calls are actual emergency calls for service. As part of that work, the mayor allocated $300,000 to start the 3-1-1 line that assists non-emergency calls, removing the burden on 911 call-takers and commissioned police officers. 3-1-1 can help residents who have a variety of needs and issues, such as being connected to mental health or substance use services, housing navigation and other city-related services, and Tucson water, transportation, and mobility and other city services. This approach ensures the right response at the right time. The 3-1-1 system was kicked off in early 2023. We are a year and a half into the implementation of Tucson 3-1-1, and the numbers are impressive. With 3-1-1 callers taking on average 13,000 calls a month, solving 50% at first touch, which means immediate resolution for half our callers. The other half are connected to the appropriate resource. Tucson 3-1-1 has demonstrated to be a crucial tool for non-emergency service requests and connecting individuals with community safety services, and are demonstrating to be successful at providing call triage and transfer process back to the right resource, whether it be to 911 when it is determined to be a true emergency or to another resource, like our embedded crisis practitioners at our Public Safety Communication Center. The 3-1-1 team has protocols that focus on identifying needs and identifying referrals to care coordinators or other non-emergency responders and departments. The Tucson 3-1-1 also takes calls for our homeless encampment protocol, which creates seamless service for constituents who report on locations for homeless encampments. And we use that to send our outreach workers to respond and engage and try to connect people to housing and services. And the 3-1-1 intake-of-service calls creates for more accurate and holistic data collecting. The amount of information on community needs and gaps in services will help guide decisions for our city leadership. The demand and number of calls is growing for our 3-1-1 system, and it's a 24/7 hour operation. Expanding the number of staff will ensure that we can keep up with the needs of our community. The addition of community service officers is an important community safety innovation that places the right work in the right hands. With an increased community need for the unique skills of commissioned resources, Tucson Police Department utilizes the Community Service Officers Program to improve both reactive and proactive service delivery for quality-of-life issues. In fiscal year '22, we started with 30 community service officers and have since increased that number to approximately 150 community service officers. The results of integrating this resource include the community service officers playing a crucial role in our holistic approach, contributing to a safe community, increasing 911 call service delivery, and expansion of our evidence-based crime reduction strategies. Part of the Alternative Response Network, our community service officers serve alongside care coordinators, housing first staff. These are the on-the-ground people providing the social services our community is asking for. For example, we have care coordinators connecting residents to our community safety net, which is our nonprofit providers. And we have community enrichment coordinators who are working in our place network investigations we now call VIVA, or Violence, Interruption, and Vitalization Action. Also, they work in our thrive zones, working with various communities to provide resources and interventions that interrupt violent criminal activity. We also have housing outreach and navigators working hand-in-hand with the unsheltered. This work reduces our reliance on police response now and into the future. As we have recruited for the position of community service officer, we are hiring a diverse and largely young workforce for the community service officer position. Applicants have great interest in serving our community, and we found this to be an excellent opportunity to grow our police force and allow Tucson Police Department to develop internal recruitments in an extremely competitive job market. Currently, we have, as I mentioned, 150 community service officers and professional staff investigators. And the proposed plan will allocate 80 more positions toward the ultimate goal of 300, because we are seeing a success in this approach. We know the investment in alternative responses reduces public safety needs in the long term. As we talk about expansion and investment in staffing, this ballot measure includes investments to add an additional 230 critical staff members who can deliver comprehensive services to create a safe and vibrant city. Those include our Housing First and Community Safety Programs, first responders, 3-1-1 and 911 communicators, and our information technology staff. And so with that, I'm going to hand it back to Tim to expand on why the people are critical to the success of this initiative.
Thank you, Liz. And I'm going to close with just a few comments. One is, at the study session earlier today, the mayor and council have already taken some actions to address some of the things you even brought up tonight. We're talking, there was talk at the table, no action yet, but talk at the table about actually labeling the housing crisis as potentially a housing emergency. I don't expect that that'll take too long for the mayor and council to come forward with some ideas in that area. Going out on a limb, as your manager here, sorry. You mentioned that we are the red tape. Yes, we are. Earlier today, Assistant City Manager Swallow got direction to move forward with removing some red tape around our corridors, our major thoroughfares, and our ability to create housing and density along those corridors, and to move forward with middle housing solutions that take down some of that red tape to help us have a better outcomes as far as that red tape is concerned. In addition, they allocated $1 million toward data integration, which is largely to support the evidence-based strategies in community safety and public safety. So that's just from today's study session. And that's outside of this ballot measure. It is showing that as other dollars become available or identified, they're being put into this space. And I'm going to close with the right work in the right hands, because this really is about the people. And Liz talked about how ultimately, across this full proposition or as measured, as proposed, it's 230 people doing this work. Of that 230, 40 are commissioned police officers, and 190 are other types of workers where we're putting this right work into the right hands. And I will say, there are other constituents who would say Tucson should have 1,400 cops on the streets. We don't agree. We believe we need 1,200 folks in the field, of which 900 would be commissioned police officers, and 300 would be these right work in the right hands, CSOs, professional staff investigators, and others that support that work without being a commissioned police officer. So this is again where I think we're more in alignment than it might appear. And I know that we may not have convinced you tonight of how close we are. But we are going to invite the continued dialogue as well. And we'll be making ourselves available to continue that dialogue with you. With that, I'll turn it back to you, mayor.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Timur. I really appreciate that additional explanation. I too agree that it's going to take additional digging in to the Safe and Vibrant City Initiative to really show the community exactly what we're trying to do and the different pots of investment that we are asking the community to continue investing in ourselves. And, you know, Liz, you had a presentation about the additional investments, right, that we're not seeing here in this particular initiative, the additional investments in affordable housing, additional investments in the thrive zones, additional investments in bringing social services. Some of my favorite categories in this initiative are the prevention strategies that we have here, the workforce development for youth and adults, the early childhood education, $1 million a year. That's a total of $10 million a year in the 10-year strategy. Youth workforce development, which is basically jobs for kids, $1 million a year, $10 million in the next 10 years. I mean, there is a variety of investments and prevention strategies and community safety strategies. What I do see here that I'm not completely convinced is city courts rehab and relocation. It's a $10 million ticket, Mr. Manager. And what I hear every single day, either by email or when I'm out and about, people tell me we need urgent and additional low-barrier shelter and transitional housing to accommodate more people within our Housing First strategy. And unsheltered people that do need mental, behavioral, substance use help. This $10 million in the city court rehab and relocation is something that I would like to move from that to low-barrier shelter and transitional housing. So move it from there to start immediately investing another $10 million to our housing strategy that is really working. So just want to make sure that it's something that we can do to add another $10 million to low-barrier shelter.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, I hear what you're indicating there, and I don't disagree with the immediate impact that increasing funding toward low-barrier shelters would have. And so I believe we could accommodate that change. And I would ask that you consider still leaving the court function as an item and maybe with some minimal funding in it. If you want to move the full $10 million, I understand that. If you reserve even some minimal funding to allow us to study that issue further, because I do believe that the function of the court systems and reforming that and doing that in a better way will help us across the board. But I hear what you're saying. The higher priority is on the low-barrier shelter. And you're also telling me to figure it out. And so I hear what you're saying. And what I would like to then also say, that still leaves a sizable investment in our proposal to have a mobile court. Because as you're well aware, part of the reformation of the court system and the reformation of getting people, you know, navigated in and out of that, preferably out of that, is meeting where they are. So if you're leaving that investment intact of the mobile court, which it sounds like you are, I think we'll be able to get a tremendous impact from that and happy to make the change that you've directed.
I want to make sure that we at least have $9.5 million to add to the additional low-barrier shelter and transitional housing opportunities. And then you could move things around and figure it out for the city court rehab and relocation. If that is something that my colleagues on the council would add or would accept as a small change, to be able to add additional funds, I would really appreciate it. But I'd like to open it up for my colleagues on the council if you all have any additional thoughts and comments. And I do see Councilmember Ulix hand up.
Thank you, mayor. And I really actually very much appreciate you calling out that line item to try and find adjustments that are responsive to a greater extent to some of what we're hearing from the community. some of what we're hearing from the community. And so I would support that change. I think one of the challenges as this gets further discussion is, and what I'm hearing really is, why invest in police and fire, commissioned officers, equipment, the line items that are, that are in the package? And I don't know, but I think we'll learn as we continue to engage in the, with the community whether that will garner support or not. I, I guess I want to share some observations that are persuasive to me. One is, I don't know that I could imagine having better leadership in the police department than Chief Kazmar and the recent promotions that he has made of a number of folks, and prior to him, Chief Magnus. When I go to neighborhood meetings and I hear people afraid because there are folks in the park who are suffering clearly, possibly addicted, or may have a mental health concern, what I hear our officers and lieutenants and captains saying is, that's not a crime. It's not something that we can arrest away. And they immediately bridge toward educating folks about 311 and our multidisciplinary outreach team. And really, the culture in, I think, our public safety departments has evolved tremendously since I was first elected in 2005 for sure. In digging down on some of the line items, which I, you know, I reacted to like an airplane, really, for the police department, I didn't get it, didn't really understand why we couldn't share or what the issues are that would require a plane. And so I think that's an example of something that we're going to really need to talk more about. And I had forgotten that we had a plane when Chief Senor was in place. It's not at all uncommon for cities of our size, especially population and 250 square miles, to reduce high-speed chases through an urban environment and to achieve other things in order to, you know, catch folks who have committed very serious crimes and are a threat to the community. The interesting thing that the chief shared with me is not only did we have that aircraft, but there are some things if we don't fund it locally and utilize federal funds, the strings attached don't reflect the values of our community and would require us to deploy our limited bandwidth toward immigration enforcement, for example. And so in each one of these areas where I pushed and asked more questions, and I want to make sure everybody has a chance to do that, to understand why these things are in there. I guess the other thing I would say is that we do have 750 commissioned police officers, and I don't begrudge them the desire for the right tools and equipment, including safety equipment and technology, to do their job as smartly and as in keeping with the values that are reflected in this conversation. Sometimes those investments are what make that more possible. And in Ward 6 recently, and I know this is a part of the picture as well, but we have had very serious incidences of gun violence. And I, we do expect, we need folks to run toward that and to address very violent crime. And so I don't begrudge our commissioned officers who, and their families, who worry about responding to those calls in the fleet that we have right now. Some of the cars are very old and outdated and not as safe and as equipped as I think they ought to be. So I agree that all of these items that are in question deserve further dialogue and anxious to engage. And again, thank you, Mayor, for making this suggestion, and I'll look forward to hearing from colleagues on any other suggestions.
All righty, Councilmember Santa Cruz? And then Councilmember Cunningham?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Ulrich, for your remarks, and I think it's helpful to have a little bit of context on how we're all kind of coming at this proposal. I think what I've heard a lot this time around and other times that we've had discussions about the budget as it pertains to the general fund is community wanting some transparency and perhaps some education about how these things come together and understanding where their voice or their perspectives come into consideration. I, I think that what we, what we do in this room, this very like public display, is an opportunity to share, right, when we have these surveys or these other town halls are an opportunity, but I think they're not enough. And I think we've been saying that since I've been in office of how do we more genuinely engage with community and take their lived experiences into consideration. I would say that from my experience and seeing how propositions come together and how they come before mayor and council, that a lot of times it's our administration bringing to light existing taxes that are sunsetting and the opportunity to continue to invest in our community, seeing the needs from their perspective, from their point of view, also from reevaluating how we provide services to our community and proposing new taxes to meet those needs. And also, not just taxes, but also other revenue opportunities, as a lot of y'all have heard us discuss that when it comes to keeping our fares free, when it comes to transit, and trying to be creative about how we invest in our community more holistically. So I think, you know, as I was reflecting on why folks get frustrated with us and feel like everything feels rushed, or we engaged during the budget season and we didn't know that this was going to lead into the proposition. I think it's not just that, right? We're talking about us projecting what our budget allocation is going to be from the state and what that means with those cuts about the revenues of what, how we're going to have to cut new programs or services that already exist and trying to make sure that that doesn't happen. I think that towards the future, and I don't know, this is our, you know, some of the work that we have to do, part of what I love about participatory budgeting is the opportunity that community members have in pitching ideas, right, to their governing body about the investments that they would like to see, and then having, you know, community groups talk about the feasibility. Like, how do we engage community around these propositions further along than last minute, you know, kind of giving us their input before we even put it out to voters? I think that's some of the long-term work that we have to do, maybe not how we've done business in the past, but I think that's what's powerful about participatory budgeting, and we can think about how we implement that more within our city. I think at the end of the day, a lot of the work that we're trying to do, and I don't want to kind of rehash everything that staff and my colleagues have shared, is like, how do we work ourselves out of a job? Because we know that a lot of what we're doing are interventions, societal inequities that have existed for a long time. So how do we, how do we meet the needs that we have right now while creating those sustainable solutions that are going to take a more long-term, steady approach? Because I think that part of the work that we have to do is create the conditions where our communities can feel empowered to thrive. As an educator, I know that the reason, a lot of the reasons why we do have violence in our community is because we don't invest in children, we don't invest in families, we are repeating generational trauma and putting that on our children, and we, you know, perpetuate cycles of poverty, cycles of power and control that start in adult, you know, child dynamics. So we have a lot of work to do on that front, but I think it's important that in, in meeting this moment, this need that we have for the next couple of years, I think it's important for the Tucson voters to get to decide how they want to invest their money, and I feel like staff and this council has weighed all of those, you know, different, what can feel like competing needs, but instead of saying like either/or, we're saying it's both, both and, that we need to invest in the moment. And so I think it's important for this proposition, and thank you, Mayor, for asking for different considerations, because we know at the end of the day, our housing crisis, our, the crisis we're seeing on our streets with not having enough housing for our unsheltered community is really putting a strain and putting us at odds with each other when we actually know we have more in common than we have differences. So with that, you know, I know we have a lot of work to do, and thank you, staff, and also hearing communities frustration with the process and how we make sure that we do something better next time.
Councilmember Cunningham?
So my big thing is that you, as a public servant, the last thing you want to do is raise taxes. It's just not, that's the biggest piece, too. That's the biggest, that's the hardest decision we have to make. But at times, there's a need, and there, you either have to take action or not, you have to take decisive action or not. I think that whenever you put any type of initiative on the ballot, there's going to be so many different things and so many different pieces to it that some folks are going to like, some folks aren't going to like, and it's never going to be perfect. The question is, is that are there enough poison pills to turn people off, or are there enough things that they like to be on? And I don't know whether or not this one's perfect, but I know this is something that just trying to stand back, I think it's a very, very earnest and deliberate effort to make our city the best city we can. At the end of the day, the state of Arizona has obviously said they're not going to help us. At the end of the day, we're not sure if the county court system and public health system are going to have all the things that we need from them to make systemic change and affect systemic change on this crisis. But what I do know is that this group has been extremely precise in trying to thread the needle and find the best solutions possible. I will definitely, hearing, there's two, I mean, there's two pieces right here that are the ones that I, do we finalize ballot language tonight? Or, so there's two pieces that I'm worried about, and if we have to, we'll come back and amend it. There's two pieces I'm worried about, and one of them is the helicopter, and one of them is the, the need for the low barrier. So I think the helicopter, for me, is absolutely important. And I'm biased, because I rode in helicopters in the Army, but I understand that when you have that site, you can, you're not creating high-risk chases, you're not creating high, and you're able to continue your investigation of the situation surveilled. So I actually think that's probably something we need, but I'm biased. The second one is the low barrier for the court trade. I actually think we should do that one tonight. I know that there's some disappointment, and we've been trying to get out of that court building for 20 years, and I get it, but I think there's some opportunities to do that outside of this initiative, and I think we'll be able to pursue that on another piece. So that's kind of how I look at this. So I want to move the motion, I want to move this to the ballot with the adjustment for a low-barrier shelter and adding beds for low-barrier shelter. So I'm going to make that in form of a motion.
So Mr. Councilmember Cunningham is basically moving to add ordinance or pass ordinance 12121 to add this to the ballot, and with the change of moving approximately $10 million, you will, you will help, we'll help define that to low-barrier housing and shelter.
That is correct, Your Honor.
So there's a motion. Do you hear a second? There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All righty, I think we need to go to roll call.
Your Honor, first I need to read the item by title.
Okay.
Ordinance Number 12121 relating to finance on elections pursuant to Chapter 4, Section 1, Subsection 20, Chapter 16, Section 6, Chapter 20, Section 2, and Chapter 26, Section 1 of the Tucson Charter and Sections 12-13 and 12-14 of the Tucson Code, calling a vote-by-mail special election to be held in the city of Tucson, Arizona on March 11, 2025, for the purpose of submitting to the city's qualified electors a proposed ballot measure or measures to include the amendment of Chapter 4 of the Tucson Charter by the addition of a new section for establishing a transaction privilege tax for specified purposes, together with any other charter amendments or ballot measures that the mayor and council may refer to the voters for approval or rejection at that election and declaring an emergency.
So let's go to roll call, please.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Feimbris?
Aye.
Ms. Ulrich?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye. Ordinance 12121 passes by a vote of 6-0.
Honorable Mayor, just a quick housekeeping announcement. We, of course, will follow the direction of the mayor and council, City Manager and I. The adjustment that was made here at the table will not require a change to the ballot language itself, but it will be reflected in an updated spreadsheet that gives the more granular detail of the plan moving forward.
Thank you so much. And thank you all for staying and being part of this conversation and being interested and caring for your community.
We have a second ordinance to approve with this side.
All righty, so which one is it? Is it 12122?
Yes, Your Honor.
So do we need a motion?
Yes.
May I have a motion to pass and adopt ordinance 12122? There's a motion?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Feimbris?
Aye.
Ms. Ulrich?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye. Ordinance 12122 passes by a vote of 6-0.
I'm sorry, Your Honor, we didn't read that one into the record either.
Oh, would you like to read it into the record then?
I would love to. Ordinance Number 12122 relating to community investment and quality of life, finance, public safety, and elections pursuant to Chapter 4, Section 1, Subsection 20, Chapter 16, Section 6, and Chapters 20, Section 2 of the Tucson Charter specifying the ballot language for the special election to be held in the city of Tucson, Arizona on March 11, 2025, for voter consideration of a charter amendment establishing a temporary sales tax for dedicated purposes, providing for oversight of the tax revenues to ensure they are expended for the authorized purposes and declaring an emergency.
So that was read into the record and passed, and now we're moving back to Item 8?
7.
7?
Yes, Your Honor. Item 7 is Consent Agenda, Items A through G.
We didn't do Consent Agenda?
No.
Okay, let's do Item 7 then.
Item A is Approval of Minutes. Item B is Finance Approval of the Issuance of General Obligation Bonds, Series 2024. Item C is Finance Approval of the Issuance of Water System Revenue Obligation Series 2024. of water system revenue obligations, Series, Series 2024. Item D is finance approval of involuntary tort judgments for fiscal year 2023-24. Item E is transportation authority to acquire right-of-way for the Blackledge Bicycle Boulevard Project, Oracle Road to Columbus Boulevard. Item F is a grant agreement with the Regional Transportation Authority of Pima County, RTA, for the Federal Transit Administration, FTA, Grant AZ 2023-002-11. Item G is Habitat for Humanity Tucson Corazon del Pueblo Subdivision Impact Fee subsidy request.
That's, that's the extent of the consent. May I have a motion? Please, Councilmember Cunningham.
Yes, Your Honor, I just want to clarify. Before I make this motion, I know it's already been clarified, but I want to make sure everybody understands that on the bond issuance, where we are going to wait to see if the timetable allows us to see if interest rates drop. Is that correct?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, it does. The action tonight authorizes us to move forward. The next step is to meet with the rating agencies to give us our bond credit worthiness ratings. That would be toward the end of October. And then the timing of the market can be any time after that for a period of up to a couple of months because that, those ratings will carry forward for a period of time. So we, we do have that flexibility.
That's perfect. So if the Fed lowers rates, we'll, we'll have, we'll, we'll enjoy that advantage. Therefore, I'm going to move that we pass and adopt the items on the consent agenda tonight.
Good.
So there's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's go to roll call. Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Feimbris.
Aye.
Ms. Sulek.
Aye.
Mayor Mero.
Aye, the items on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of 6-0. Item eight.
Public hearing, Housing and Urban Development HUD Citizen Participation Plan, Resolution Number 23814. City manager's communication number 258 dated September 11 is received into and made part of the record. This is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing to take formal action regarding the five-year Housing and Urban Development Community Planning and Development Citizen Participation Plan Programs Years 2025 through 2029. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Please come forward when I call your name and make your presentation, state your name, whether you live in the city, whom you are representing, and whether or not you are a paid speaker. Is, do we have any speakers for this? No, Your Honor. So we don't have any requests to speak? Oh, before we do that, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none, all righty.
Now I move, we close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing. And a second. Any further discussion on closing the public hearing?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any against? Motion carries. All righty, this public hearing is closed. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution 23814 by number and title only. Resolution Number 23814 relating to Housing and Community Development, approving the proposed city of Tucson City Five-Year U.S. Housing and Urban Development HUD Community Planning and Development CPD Citizen Participation Plan CPP for Program Years 2025 through 2029 and declaring an emergency.
All righty. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I move that we adopt the resolution, Mayor.
Good.
There's a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 23814. We need to go to roll call. Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Feimbris.
Aye.
Ms. Sulek.
Aye.
Mayor Mero.
Aye. Resolution 23814 passes by a vote of 6-0. Item nine.
Public hearing, TP AMD 0624006 Broadmoor Broadway Village Neighborhood Plan Update Resolution Number 23815. City manager's communication number 260 dated September 11 is received into and made part of the record. This is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the proposed update of the Broadmoor Broadway Village Neighborhood, which replaces the 1988 planned recommended land use map. This public hearing is scheduled to last for more than, no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Please come forward when I call your name and make your presentation, state your name, whether you live in the city, whom you are representing, and whether or not you are a paid speaker. I do have a couple of speaker cards. Our first one is Barbara Becker.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Barbara Becker. And I represent the planning committee that created the plan. We started it in 2018. So we have five years of public input on the plan, which is phenomenal. We had multiple surveys that we did. And what we're proudest of of this plan is that it's not what the city can do for us, but we looked at what we, the neighborhood, could do for each other. And we've already started some of the committees based on recommendations like emergency preparedness. So we're hoping that tonight you will also approve and endorse our plan so that these committees can really get rolling. We did in the spring, this April, by a large majority, pass, approved by, in the general meeting, this plan. So it has been approved by the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Our next speaker is Susan Husband.
Good evening. My name is Susan Husband. And I live in the Broadmoor Broadway Village Neighborhood. I've lived there for about 35 years. And since I moved in, I've been active with our neighborhood association, which is a volunteer neighborhood association. It's not an HOA. We have, I think, a very engaged neighborhood with a lot of people active on various committees and activities. And our original plan, as Barbara mentioned, was done in the 1980s. And it was, it is an excellent plan and it has guided our neighborhood in the goals and objectives that we've worked for. So our new neighborhood plan incorporates that previous plan and keeps a lot of the same goals. And it's mainly been updated to deal with the issues of growth that have come up and also with climate change. And also the changes in technology, such as holding Zoom meetings or holding elections remotely or on Zoom. So a majority of the neighbors have supported that plan. And in the meeting that we had, it was, it did get wide support in the voting. I did want to, to mention, well, one of our new projects that we're wanting to work on now is the Emergency Preparedness Committee, which is something that's just been started recently and which neighbors are enthused about. So we're anxious to get going with that. One thing I did want to mention that had been raised before was the idea of proxy voting because there was, there is a contingency of a few neighbors in our neighborhood who have objected to the way that, that the voting was handled and wanted to be able to use proxy voting in that and felt that it was unfair that they couldn't. And I'd just like to clarify that in a democracy such as ours, we generally don't allow proxy voting. And it does bring up issues of harassment and intimidation. And I have a personal example of a dear friend of mine who was very ill with cancer, and she has since passed away. But at the time that this proxy voting issue was going on, a person came to her house three different times trying to convince her to give him her proxy vote. And I think that was definitely harassment. So I would just like to put that forward, that I think we should continue to not allow the proxy voting. So anyway, we're ready to move forward with our new plan. And we're just asking your help to help us do that and to approve it tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Husband. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak and be heard on this item? Right, seeing none. May I get a motion to close the public hearing? Some more.
Second, Your Honor.
There's a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none. I believe we need, do we need it? Just a voice, okay. So hearing none, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, signify by saying aye.
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 Any against? Motion carries. Ms. Clerk, you're requested to read Resolution 23815 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23815 relating to planning and zoning, approving an update of the Broadmoor Broadway Village Neighborhood Plan in Case TP AMD 0624006 for properties bounded on the north by Broadway Boulevard, on the east by Country Club Road, on the west by Tucson Boulevard, and on the south by Cetation Watt, Wash, and Windsor Street.
What is the council's pleasure?
Mayor Mero?
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you. I, I'd like to start by thanking Ms. Becker and Ms. Husband and all of the volunteers who worked so hard over years to pull this together and to, to update the plan. And, and, you know, it's, it's just another example of how committed Tucsonans are to taking care of their corner of our community as best possible. And there's just such a good reflection of people's commitment to our community. So thanks to you both and to everybody involved. And with that, I would like to move that we pass and adopt Resolution 23815.
I'll think of that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the motion? I too want to thank all of the neighbors for really spending so much time as volunteers in getting it right. And so in being able to be thoughtful in how you are going to grow inside of the neighborhood, on the edges of the neighborhood, and how your neighborhood will contribute to make Tucson such a beautiful community. So thank you for the hundreds of hours of volunteer work. We really appreciate you. With that, let's go to roll call. Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Feimbris.
Aye.
Ms. Sulek.
Aye.
Mayor Mero.
Aye. Resolution 23815 passes by a vote of 6-0.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. We really appreciate you. Item 11. Adjournment. Council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Wednesday, September 25, 2024, at or after 5:30 p.m. Thank you all so much. Have a wonderful rest of your week.